All right. We'll call it 6:30. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as it is proposed.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Any further discussion or anything to be added to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none. Move on to public comment. If anybody has any issues or concerns about justice in the council, please step up to the podium. Not hearing any, we'll continue on. We will go to the consent agenda. Is there anything from the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Nope? Okay. I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moved. Second.
Jesus, we've been forever since the almost. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And motion passes. Number six, reports and recommendations for city departments, councils, and administrative.
Okay, so we will be starting off the night with 2020 Highway 25 project update. So I have Diane from Mindot here to go over kind of where we're at with the planning for the Highway 25 project. Yep.
Also, I'm Diane Langback, the Mid-Dot South Area Engineer for Carver and Scott Conys. You recall I was here back in November to talk about the project that we'll be having this summer?
Yep.
Oh yeah, there you go. Thank you. So we do have a project that is following up that one, and it was originally scheduled for 2022 and then got moved up to 2021. So this is the project, the project coming this summer, if you recall, that basically starts at Cassaw 30 or First Street and goes up through, thank you, goes up through Watertown, where 25 makes the 90-degree turn. That's coming this summer. And then next year, we have a project, it's a much smaller project, and it starts right at Cassaw 30, First Street, and then heads down to Highway 5. So it's about a six-mile segment. And so that one is a real thin melon overlay, it's about a three-quarter inch, and it's really more for preventative maintenance, more so than a thicker melon overlay like we're doing this summer. I will say though, I know Maggie let us know about the pavement issue that's part of this segment. And so I actually was in the area early, so I took some pictures and did forward that on to maintenance and to materials to take a look at that. I know when I talked to the materials engineer last week, she brought it up even on Google, and you could see there's that bad segment right there by the lumberyard. So we are looking into that, and hopefully we can at least for now get signs up that say, you know, bumps ahead or whatever. But we will be taking a closer look to see really what that segment needs because it's a very rough ride through there right now. So we will be looking through that. I also wanted to let you know that we are looking at widening the shoulder right near the Veterans Memorial. The Stan, I think was the gentleman's name that is kind of heading that up. When I talked to him about his plan for buses and RVs, he was like, well, I think we'll pull in and then we'll have them back out on the Highway 25. And I'm like, no, that's, we really don't think that's a good idea. So we're going to widen the shoulder. Think I have a...
That's me.
Oh, can you just go forward? Yeah, we're going to widen the shoulder in this area here so they can just kind of parallel park right along 25. And then we're still looking into whether there's a sidewalk connection needed or what we're looking into right-of-way and whatnot in that area. But that's the plan right now, is to have them park along 25 and then just put a little bit more pavement on that shoulder right there. Now, if you wouldn't mind going back. Actually, if you go just one more forward, there's just one of the pictures that I took today of the pavement, and I don't need to show you because you're, I'm sure, more familiar with it than I am. But, so we will be looking into that. This project will also include some drainage improvements. And then there's some ADA improvements that we were going to do in this project this summer, right at the corner where the Dakota Rail Trail is, that crossing. And what we found is that we needed some right-of-way, and we just didn't have enough time to get some right-of-way to do it with this year's project, so we moved it into next year's project. And so there will be an impact to that regional trail crossing for somewhere between two and four weeks, but we will be creating a detour connection that'll be paved right to the south. So we'll make sure that people still have a good trail connection when we're working right on those corners. That'll bring the ADA up to meet the required standards. And then there's a city trail, as you all know, on that east side, and we have a limited use permit with the city right now for that trail, but it needs some improvements as well. So Mindot's going to go ahead and do the minor repairs as part of next year's project, and then we just ask the city to renew the limited use permit. Now, they used to be good forever, and now they expire after 10 years. So if we can just update that sometime during this project, that would be very helpful. So as I mentioned, this is a six-mile thin melon overlay paving, potential for more at the settlement area. I know one of the questions that we had when we were talking with Dave and Maggie is what the city might have for kind of a vision on that segment to the south, you know, whether that's something you foresee wanting some sidewalk for that area and what that might be looking like. I did check in with materials to ask them about, you know, how long this project will last and when we might be back with a bigger project. And it sounded like, we usually get about eight to 10 years out of this type of three-quarter inch thin melon overlay. So we would be back in probably that, like, eight-year timeframe. So if that's something that you want to think about and decide, like I mentioned, we'll probably be looking at maybe putting a small amount of sidewalk in next to the memorial. But otherwise, we really don't have a lot of sidewalk connections planned for this next project. I think I covered most of this. There are some miscellaneous safety improvements. We are going to remove some trees that are within the clear zone just for improved safety, update some guard rail, and then do some slope flattening where you have driveway connections to 25. If the side of those driveways are too sloped, it means if someone goes off the road, it's a very dangerous situation. So we flatten those out so that it makes it safer for anyone that might leave the road. And really, these kind of projects go really quickly as far as paving, so the traffic impacts will be very minimal. I don't know exactly what those are yet, but usually it's some flagging operations or they pave at night or whatever. The counts out here are pretty low, so I don't think there'll be long waits or anything. So it'll be pretty minimal. So I'm open for questions. That's kind of all I wanted to make sure I covered. I can take questions about this year's project or next year's project. I do kind of wish that I would have known this was going to be moved up to 21 because then it would have kind of made sense to maybe combine this all into one project, but that's the way things kind of go. You know, we program in a certain year, and then sometimes they get moved around. So I do kind of apologize for back-to-back, but this one really should be pretty minimal as far as impacts and whatnot, so. Do you have any questions? Any particular concerns?
I would be interested in talking more about a sidewalk on the lumberyard side up to Hidden Creek.
Hidden Creek? Okay.
Do you have Hidden Creek in the trail?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think our goal when we talked was to bring it to a workshop because, and what elements we could do next year and what makes sense to wait until we've saved some money for it. So maybe a little, just getting an idea of what's possible and what the cost would be for the city and if that's feasible for us to take on. Or we, you know, again, they'll be back in eight years, and if we could do the sidewalk now and curb and gutter later, because I think usually the policy is, right, Dave, to, if you make improvements, you're supposed to kind of make it urban. I don't know.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we were considering making it urban, we'd have to just take a look at the profile of the road and just drainage, things like that, make it a little more complicated than just necessarily plopping it in there. One thing we did talk about when we met, whenever it was, a couple of weeks ago here, is it may make sense to at least tie the curb and gutter around First Street, bring it down to the entrance of the Veterans Memorial, kind of, you know, get that all tied in as part of this project if that's possible.
Yep.
And then take a harder look at some of the urban improvements all the way down to at least Casey's with that next project, which gives you several years to kind of think through that, do some engagement, and think about how the city portion might be paid for if you want to kind of keep extending our urban section down to the south.
I think if you could, if we could, you know, get that sidewalk in, like you're saying, down to the Veterans Memorial, I think that would be helpful. I mean, you can picture them coming off of a bus or an RV or something onto the shoulder, you know, it'd be nice to have that connection maybe just to the driveway of the memorial. So maybe we can just talk through that a little bit more, but I just wanted to make sure the city was on board with that and if the timing, you know, for a bigger project down the way, I think it would make some sense. I know you already have the trail on the east side, but a lot of your residents are on the west side, so.
I think that's the good thing, is that at least there is a pedestrian way to get you along that stretch. But yeah, certainly with Hidden Creek on the other side of the road, if they're trying to get to the downtown, it, you know, prevents you having to cross 25 if you have a sidewalk all the way down.
A lot of times you'd have to cross twice.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And we don't have a good, we don't have any crossings from the other two, so that's really our only place for people to cross.
Right.
So as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, one of the thoughts was, again, with this being moved up to next year, that might be tight, one, from a planning standpoint, but also just with some of the other projects you've got going on now, from a financing standpoint, might make a little more sense or more, makes it more helpful with the idea that this is more of a preventative maintenance to get us a few years down the road, that the timing might work out better. Now, the eight years maybe is a little bit longer than what we had originally hoped for, but anyway.
I mean, that doesn't mean you couldn't do something sooner as like a co-op project, similar to what you did in 2007, I think it was.
Yeah.
So there's certainly some other options as well.
Right, because if we were to look at an urban section down to Hidden Creek Boulevard, again, really, then that's a reconstruction at that standpoint.
Exactly.
It really doesn't fit the scope of what you're trying to do.
Right.
Here, which is similar to when we went through downtown in 2007, whatever it was. That was originally a melon overlay project too, and that really, the scope of that was short of what the city was looking to do through downtown.
Yep. To the extent we can, we just like to coordinate things and, so we can talk through that if the timing, you want to do something sooner than that. Any other questions or anything? You'll be seeing a lot of us, I guess, the next two years, but then after that, it might be a little while, at least.
Could you just touch on real quick the engagement you've been doing with the business owners and the people on the project?
Yep, we've been, our public affairs coordinator, Christine Dufour, and I have been out kind of walking and just visiting with the businesses. We thought that probably was more effective than having a meeting and making them come to another meeting. And so we've been stopping in and talking with them, letting them know the project now that it got kind of extended when we got that additional Main Street funding. So we've been talking to them about the potential for impacts. We're finding out whether they've got a side door that, if we're working on the sidewalk right at the front of their business, is there another access that they can use? And we're kind of tabulating all that just so the contractor has that information. And so far, we've gotten positive feedback from the businesses and whatnot. And we will likely, I think we've already got one scheduled for April, one more public meeting that we would then make sure that we invite the businesses to as well, just to give them up-to-date information, so.
And then just for your information, it kind of sounds like the timing of when the project will be bid and actually awarded, construction probably doesn't start until right after Rising Community Festival.
Right.
Anyway, that, just the timing of that kind of works out nice.
Timing actually does work out pretty well because we...
It's later in the year.
It's a little bit later.
At least everything won't be torn up right when you're trying to have your celebration.
Right. Great. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come and discuss this.
All right, that brings us to 61B, the 2019 audit process.
Okay. So as you know, every year we do, we have our annual audit. Our audit was completed this year at the end of January by Abdo Eichenmeier, and we have Greta from Abdo here to kind of go over the findings and, yep, so I'll let you...
Thank you, Maggie. As Maggie said, my name is Greta. I have been with Abdo Eichenmeier's on the mayor audit for five years, so I'm familiar with what's going on, familiar with the happenings of the city, and happy to be here tonight with all of you. Thank you for having us as your auditors. It's been a lot of fun being here, so. I am going to go to the second page, Maggie. As auditors, it is our responsibility to give you an opinion on your financial statements. So we are going to go over our opinion. We are going to look at the general fund results. We will look at the other governmental funds as well, and then we will take a look at the enterprise funds, and we'll end with some of the ratios that affect not only capital debt and some of the taxes in different areas that we audit. If we look at page three, we issued an unmodified opinion this year. That is the best opinion you can get on a financial statement audit, so no worries there. We did test legal compliance as required by the state of Minnesota. There's seven different areas that we test legal compliance in, and we did find two, we had two findings that we will talk about in the next slide related to legal compliance. We also did look at some internal controls and compliance under the governmental audit standards. In total, we had eight findings this year, and we'll cover those on the next page. I do want to mention before we get into the different findings that we were noting this year, that the city in itself is in a good financial position. The general fund, the water and sewer funds are all very healthy, and so that's really nice to see. And with that service, there's been a really nice trend of paying down debt, and you'll notice that in some of the slides that we present in a little bit. So on page four, it does list out the different findings that we had this year, and we'll just go down the list, and if you have questions, please feel free to stop me at any time. I'd be happy to go over them in more detail. The first one and the second one are very common findings for cities the size of mayor. These are ones that you will find in most financial statements for cities of the size. Preparation of the financial statements means that there is somebody outside of the city that's preparing your financials. Limited segregation of duties means that there are not enough people within the city to fully segregate the duties that we would like to see between the different sections of the audit or, you know, departments of the city. So people who reconcile the bank statements shouldn't be the same people who take in cash, you know, things of that nature. But because of the size of your city, it's not always feasible to be able to have enough people to cover those different roles, and so there's a finding for that. And as I mentioned, that's very common for cities of your size. The third finding that is listed, 201903, is the control of the check signing stamp. This was also a finding last year, and you'll notice that the ones with a X next to them under the current year finding were all here last year as well. We did talk about this with the mayor when he was in, while we were out here, and we had talked about the fact that they had decided to implement a different, they were going to buy a lockbox and keep the stamp in a lockbox that the mayor had to eliminate that finding for next year. So it sounds like good steps are being made to take care of that finding for next year, so we don't anticipate that that will be there again. The fourth finding is a developer escrow account deficit balance. And the reason that this is a finding, the escrow accounts were reconciled in August and then didn't get reconciled again before year end, and so there was no follow-up on the, whether the city had been paid back for costs that the city had incurred related to some of those escrows. And so that, if, you know, we would like to see that that is getting paid back in a timely manner and that you're not having that money owed to you for escrows. Number 2019005 is the proper supporting documentation. In 2019006, these are the two findings that relate to Minnesota legal compliance. So the proper supporting documentation and the time period of payment, the supporting documentation relates to credit card receipts that we found that didn't have proper support. And those credit cards, all related to the mobile gas card, and so there were six different receipts in the month that we tested that had zero support. And legal compliance of the state of Minnesota requires that all purchases from the city are required to have the original receipt kept with them. For the time period of payment, this is a finding due to the fact that there was different bills, we found two in the selection of 25 that we tested, that were paid late in that within, so legal compliance requires that bills are paid within 35 days. And the two that are mentioned here were paid outside of that 35 days. And so that is, again, not allowed under the Minnesota legal compliance, so therefore there's a finding in your financial statements for that. 2019007 is a material audit adjustment. This adjustment was made due to a early payment of debt, and so we needed to move the debt into the correct year so that the debt schedule, as it was originally designed, was followed so that we had the debt paid in the correct year and expenses matched the amortization schedules there. 2019008 is for authorized signers. And what we noticed when we were looking, so we confirm all of the bank accounts for the city. We look at the ending balances, and we also look at who is an authorized signer on those bank accounts, because we want to make sure that people who should have access to your bank accounts are listed, and people who are no longer a part of the city, former employees, former council members, former mayors, et cetera, are no longer listed. And we had one cash account where the former mayor was still listed as a signer on the cash account. And so because we test different items each year to ensure compliance, this was something that came to our attention this year. We wanted to make sure that that was brought to your attention, and that was taken off of that cash account and, you know, so you had accurate people on there. The last finding that I want to go over is a finding for claims approval. And again, this is a finding that was removed this year. This is a finding from 2018. You can see that this one is no longer a finding this year, and so that's great. That means that we are working on getting those findings off and hoping that more of them drop off again next year, so we'll look forward to that. Maggie, if we can go to page five, please. This slide goes over the different pieces of the general fund, and what we see here are three different lines. One, the red line is showing you the budget, the general fund budget, over the last couple of years. The blue line is detailing the actual fund balances over those same years, and the gray line on the bottom shows you what the city of mayor's fund balance policy is requiring. And so you can see that your budget and your actual fund balance are sitting, you know, greatly above the 50% of the following year's budget or expenditures. And so you can see that that fund balance is sitting in a nice, healthy position there. So if we look at the next slide, the general fund budget to actual, this breaks down some of the different pieces of the actual budget. So we're looking at the revenues, how they compare to the budget, the variance is there, as well as the expenditures. And you can see that with the revenues, you had a $71,000 variance with your final budget, and so you brought in more revenues than you expected or that you budgeted for. And with the expenditures, you had $36,000 or almost $37,000 less than you had budgeted for. And what makes up some of those differences is, as far as the revenues were, there was a $42,000 tower rent that went in during 2019 that bumped up those revenues. And then as far as the expenditures, capital outlay was under budget by about $170,000. That was offset by a couple different departments, specifically Public Works was over budget by $135,000. And when you break that down, the two things that made up that difference were snow removal was much higher this year, as well as engineering costs. And so that, those two pieces kind of offset each other and ended up with that difference of $36,000 that you see there. If we go to the next slide, we are going to look at the general fund revenues by type. And here you'll notice that in 2019, your property taxes jumped up about $150,000, whereas your other license and permits took a small decline. Services were a little bit higher than 18, but very consistent, as well as other revenue types. They was very consistent as well. And that tax levy was due to budgeting for future capital purchases, and that fits well into the discussion that we had just prior to me being up here, so. If we talk about page eight, this is looking at the different expenditures that, different expenditures by type. And you'll see here that your expenditures kind of bounce up and down depending on what is happening in that current year. In 2017, the biggest thing that you'll notice is on the very far right side is there was that large transfer out. That transfer out was made to transfer excess fund balance into capital project reserves. So that's kind of what we're looking at there. And you'll also see that, no, that's probably the biggest one. There's not too much difference there otherwise, so. The Public Works, we already talked about that one being higher this year due to the snow removal and the engineering costs. Otherwise, the different departments are looking very consistent with other years, so not too much that went on there those years, so. On page nine, we're looking at the capital project fund balance. You'll notice it's very consistent, very small changes in this, not much to say here other than they're, you know, sitting in a nice, healthy position as well. So, you know, the budgeted reserves that you have or the capital projects that you have coming up are what this money is being budgeted for, and so it is being used for those. On page 10, we look at the special revenue fund balances. These are very small little accounts, EDA and the fire department contributions, not very big balances in these accounts, but they've stayed consistent over the last three years, so there's not too much change there. If we look at page nine, this is looking at your debt service accounts. And the biggest thing I can tell you here is that in 2023, you'll have your 2014A bonds dropping off, leaving behind the 2015A bond as well as equipment certificate. But you'll see that in 2024, you're going to have a much lower payment each month or each year, I'm sorry, related to debt, which will be a very nice situation for the city to be in. Right now, at the end of the year, you have $1.4 million in bonds outstanding. If we turn to page 12, we are looking at the water fund now, so now we're transitioning into some of the enterprise funds. And these charts are a little bit hard to understand sometimes, so please stop me if you would like some explanation, and I'll be happy to go over them in a little bit more detail if you need. But what I can tell you is that on the top graph, the blue bar is looking at the receipts that the city is taking in. The second bar, the green and the gray, are your operating costs, in the gray in the debt payments in green. And you can see that your receipts that you're bringing in are sufficient to cover your operating costs, but not in total with your debt. But those debt payments are being covered by your connection fees, so that is what is funding those. In the bottom graph, we're looking at your cash balances, and the red line is the minimum target balance that we would expect that you would have in your cash accounts to cover your following year's debt service, as well as 50% of the operating costs for the city for the following year. You can see that your cash is sitting in a healthy position. Again, what we would like to make note... Again, what we would like to make note of is that those amounts have been budgeted so that you can afford to pay for future capital projects that are coming up. And so while those are healthy, we would like to keep them in a healthy position as well.
I just have one question.
Yes.
So for healthy, we want to stay on that red line?
Mm-hmm.
If we had projects coming up, we could...
Yeah, so one thing I'm working with them on is, so we do have the three water projects coming up this year. And one of them, I'm, we're going to probably look at paying cash for the water tower because it does not qualify for the PFA loan. So those two projects would go for the PFA loan. And then our other way that we've been discussing is to actually pay cash for the water tower painting. So, yeah, and I did talk with Steve with ABDO and he felt like that was...
And you'll be working with that into your long-term plan. I'm assuming that will be presented soon as well.
Yep.
Likewise, we would not want to see the cash drop all the way down to the red. Having a little bit of a buffer is always a better situation than having nothing left as reserves. So, you know, there's always things that come and go. There's always going to be pieces that, you know, spring up that you're not expecting. And so having a little bit extra is a really good situation to be in. Anything else with that, Paige? Thank you for that question. When we look at the sewer fund, you'll notice very similar results on this page. Again, your receipts are in a position that they're covering your operating costs, but not the debt. The only difference here is that in addition to the connection fees, you also do a levy for the sewer fund. And so that is also being used to cover some of those costs. Again, the cash balances are budgeted for future capital projects. And so those amounts are right where we would like them to be. On page 14, we're looking at the stormwater fund. The stormwater does not have any debt, so you only see the blue and the gray. And you'll notice that in 2018, that was the only year that your receipts did not cover your dispersments. You can see that that correlated to the low cash balance below in the chart underneath. And so in 2019, the receipts were higher. That went up due to the Met Council Stormwater Grant that you brought in for $20,000, as well as $20,000 in additional stormwater fees that were brought in compared to 2018. So that's nice to see that bump back up. If we look at page 15, and this breaks out the different cash balances by fund type. And so it breaks down the general fund, debt service, capital projects, enterprise funds, special revenue funds, and fiduciary funds. And you'll notice that there's really not much of a change. It stayed pretty consistent over those years. The only thing that you'll really see is that the middle purple bar is the debt payments and those are shrinking, which is because you're paying off those debt payments. So that's nice to see. If we flip to page 16, we're going to move into some of the ratios that compare the city of mayor to not only other cities their size, but also cities in Carver County. We do not have 2018 data, so the information that is on here is still looking at 2016 and 2017. The OSA hasn't released the 2018 data to us yet, so we were not able to include that for this year. But what I can tell you so far is that your tax rate dropped in 2017 and has remained steady 2017, 2018, and 2019. And you can also see that your taxes per capita are very consistent with not only other cities your size, but also other cities in Carver County. So it's, your taxes are, I mean, under the other cities in Carver County for both 16 and 17. So that's, that's nice to see that they're very comparable. On page 17, we're looking at debt per capita and then the current expenditures per capita. So you'll see that, we were talking about earlier, those debt payments going down. And you can see that by the sharp decline in the, in the blue line, which signifies the city of mayor. And so though we expect that that trend to continue as those debt payments come off. And in the current expenditures per capita, you are sitting at about half of the balances of other cities your size. And so that's the green bars. Class four cities means certain population cities. And so you're, you're under those, as well as the cities in Carver County. And on page 18, we are looking at the capital expenditures per capita. And this bar, the blue bar, is the city of mayor. And this is going to bounce around every year, depending on what you have going on. So if you've got a big project, you're going to be much higher. If you don't have as much going on capital-wise that year, it's going to be a lot lower. So it just kind of shows you where you're sitting compared to other cities, compared to the county. And so you can see that it has increased a couple, a couple dollars per capita each, each year for the past couple of years. But in 2016, it was much higher. So not much to say about the graph on the bottom, simply because we don't have the other information for 2018. So unfortunately, we don't have that to give you. If we look at page 19, we are looking at the debt service expenditures as a total percentage, or a percentage of total expenditures. And I'd like to point out the 2019 amount of 19.73%. The rule of thumb is that 20% or less is kind of your target area of where you want those debt balances to be. And so this indicates by rating agencies that it's a manageable, manageable debt amount. All right, so if we flip to page 20, we're going to look at the debt, or the water fund debt service coverage. And you can see here that in 2019, there was enough cash to cover 63% of the debt service in those funds. We talked a little bit about this before, that the remaining amount is covered by your connection fees in the water fund. And so although that isn't quite all the way up 100%, you do have those connection fees coming in to cover those costs. And the sewer fund, we talked about that there was connection fees, but there was also the levy amounts there, so. And that is the extent of my presentation. Does anybody have any additional questions that I can answer for you? No? Well, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate being able to be here as your editors. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Okay. So a little bit on this. The current five-year contract with Republic Services, originally through Elite, will end in August, on the 31st. So at prior meetings, the council has expressed interest in going out for RFP, or request for proposals for a new contract that would start September 1st, 2020. So staff is requesting to solicit proposals in March because adequate time is needed for the process. That would include education if, and preparation of a contract, and then also just switching out carts if that's what needs to take place. So the RFP that is included in your packet is requesting similar services that are currently provided in our current contract, which includes garbage and recycling, a cleanup day, special bins for community events, and special pickups upon request. We also have bins that service our community buildings at no charge. We're also putting in a few extra items just to see what the cost will be if, and if residents are interested in these services. It would be yard waste during the summer months, just as a extra if they want to do that. A leaf cleanup day. I think some cities just do a day where you put out a bunch of leaf bundles and the contractor will pick them up at no charge. And then organics, because I know that was in our previous contract, or in our current contract, but is not provided by the current contractor. So upon council approval for the RFP, staff will begin to solicit proposals. That involves, you can put it up on the League of Minnesota Cities, they have a section for that. Otherwise, you can solicit directly to companies, and that's what our plan is. Also included in the packet is a tentative timeline. So we're, we would be, upon approval, the earliest would be getting the proposal out by tomorrow. And then our response time would be March 24th, is when we would require them to submit their proposals. So with that, actually, there, and then I just wanted to make note on page 159, there was a little bit of an error. I do need to delete under recyclables, collection, and processing, a sentence right underneath that. The underlined part, part of that needs to be deleted. But otherwise, staff is requesting any, or asking for any feedback or comments before, and then request for, to put this out for proposal from council.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So with the additional services that you were talking about, like with the yard waste collection?
Yep.
Individual homes can choose that?
Yes, it wouldn't be a requirement. It would just be a, like, if, if they are interested.
And then the leaf collection day? Would that be something that's built into everybody's fees for that? Because I mean, we have our compost two days a week, so.
Yeah, so we were, I guess when we, when I was looking at it, it was just kind of like a, for those, yeah, we do have the compost site, but just kind of like a extra. I don't know if that would, I could ask if that would affect their proposals. Otherwise, we can just leave it out. I know there's just some contractors that will provide it as, as their overall contract, so.
And then the Christmas tree collection? Would that be an additional cost for the people that choose to do that? Or is that something that would be the cost?
No, that would, that would be, that would not be an additional fee. It would kind of be like the cleanup day, just an extra event that they would, that they would do.
But they would have to build that cost in to all of us?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, it would go into the rates. But I know we also, I was going to ask too, because I know we do, we just started working with a local, the school to do a Christmas tree pickup too. So I just wanted to put it in there as like a option that we can take out tonight if, if you want to continue with the school operation.
Well, I don't do real Christmas trees, so I don't want to pay for that.
Right. That's why I'd like to know how much that would...
And if we, you know, you can bring it out to the compost site, right? Or, or the school as a fundraiser. I would, I don't see the need of having it in there, but...
Okay, we can take that one out.
That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah. How do you feel about the leaf collection? Do you want to?
I know some cities do it, but that's, a lot of the cities that do it have a compost that's like very limited hours, not twice a week like ours is. And that the compost is typically a little bit further away where ours is. I mean, we have a small town, so it's not that far away for anybody. I guess for me, I just would want to see how much that would affect our overall rates.
Okay.
I mean, if it's like two cents a year, then that's fine, but...
We, I mean, a lot of our trees are getting more mature. Like, you know, I have a lot more leaves than probably me or her have, or you have, just due to the size and maturity of my trees. And then we have homeowners where their trees were just planted, you know, a year ago with new, new houses. Again, it would be one of those things where, you know, they probably just mulch them up and they're not going to bake them. I mean, I don't know, I just, it's kind of like the Christmas tree thing that, you know, we have resource, we have a place that people can bring. I would hate to have to have everybody pay for that when, you know, I choose to just mulch mine into my grass because it's good nutrients.
Right. But if it's a nominal fee, if it's, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, if it's like pennies, fine.
Versus, you know, if I'm looking at an extra $15 a year, I'm probably going to be like, yeah, maybe not, but...
I don't want it to be a deal breaker, I want it...
No, no. But I'd just be interested in knowing what that, how that would affect our overall.
Yeah, I can't, maybe we can write it in a way that they can do it as an add-on, like what they actually...
Yeah, could you do it an add-on?
Otherwise, I don't know. Oh, I can ask.
And the resident could choose to have that?
The payment?
That on their account.
Well, I'll make a motion to send it out for proposals, excluding the Christmas tree, and then wondering how the leaf pickup would affect us, our bills.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, is there any other comments? Hearing none, we will, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes? Four? All right. That brings us to 62, Public Works, in this seasonal position.
Okay, so tonight, we're just, every summer, we kind of get extra help with the Public Works Department. So in the past, we've hired a part-time seasonal employee to assist with mowing, weed whipping, picking up garbage, and watering flowers. And so we did budget for a part-time seasonal person for 30 hours per week, for 13 weeks at $12 an hour. And so we are just asking for council approval tonight to put that job out for, to promote that job for the summer season.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, say same sign. Hearing zero, that's motion passes. Brings us to city council reports. Anybody have anything to report upon?
I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Watertown Mayor, Community Ed. And early this month, I think it was like either February 3rd or 4th, they have officially now have licensed daycare for infants and toddlers. And you could sign up for whatever days. You can even just do drop-ins as well. Very beautiful, wonderful facilities. They are able to take on a large amount of children, so that's great. They also have a community lounge that is open to the public and has daily activities. I've given the information to Maggie and she's going to put it hopefully in a newsletter with our city bill at some point here in the near future. So if you know anyone who's looking for a good licensed daycare for their little kiddos, they now got a good one up there, so.
Yeah, it's awesome.
We had, we had a open house for the new playground equipment in Fieldstone. And I personally think it was a great turnout. We probably had, what, four families, but 12 people. They brought their children, which was super awesome. And we had a couple of the kids that were very enthusiastic and very excited. They live in Fieldstone and use that park quite often. So they got to vote and kind of pick. So we have narrowed it, we have narrowed it down to equipment. We're working on the bid, the final quote. But it will look something like this, with a smaller age group. The color, we picked different colors, but then more, one, some of the children, so they like the ninja course kind of style. So we talked about that, so this was kind of the best of both worlds. And then some swings and, we talked about doing a couple more updates to that park. It was kind of good. We had it on our, our overall plan in the next five years to add a half basketball court. And that was something they asked for without us, us even saying that. So it was actually really nice to see the community come and be involved. And then we had a special meeting to approve that equipment so that it can come to council probably at our next meeting, so that we can get on the schedule to get it installed this spring.
Yeah, the fire station committee met again. We kind of discussed how the open houses were going to work, how we were going to advertise, what we wanted the boards to look like, or the information boards. And I think they're just kind of anxious to get that contract in front of Congress. to get that contract in front of council and we're, yeah, finished up, I guess.
Yep. So the attorney and the architect are currently going back and forth on the contract. It's a pretty significant contract, um, so it's, it is taking a little bit little bit longer than anticipated, um, just because the attorney feels like this contract is for the life of the project and therefore need, the city needs to be protected throughout the the life of the project, ex- essentially, so um, so we're anticipating that it'll be on the next meeting, though.
Any other business?
Oh, can we talk about the video, like, how that's going, the new video?
Oh, yeah, it's going well. Um, so I would say we're ninety-five percent done with with it all. Um, the next step is to work with our IT to then be able to end Tierney to get it downloadable to the computer. Right now, we're still doing a jump drive, but we have to put some other um things in place, like a um IT-wise, before we can then connect the system or my computer to this system. So um it is pretty much complete.
I noticed the echo is gone, so.